Hi Christina, you on?
Hi Bill.
Hey Jim, how are you?
Good, I'm on. Ed, I'm in.
Wow, who the heck let that happen?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
How do you guys access the meeting? Do you get an email?
Well, you know, I've had the same problem, Bill. Sometimes I do and sometimes I don't. And the only way I've been able to access it lately is I get on the agenda on the town website and I copy and paste the meeting link.
That's what I had to do. I had to copy it and paste it into a browser. So I suggested to Christina on an email that she could invite people with the link with Zoom. You're going to Zoom, you schedule a meeting and you have the option to send invitations and it goes right to Outlook. And everybody gets it in the inbox and then it can pop up as a reminder. I have to go looking for it every time.
Yeah, and what happens is the Outlook reminder that I get doesn't work. So I'm not sure what's going on with that. Well, hold on here a second. Hello? Yeah. Oh boy, did you go ahead? Can you go to the agenda? It'll be on the agenda. Okay, that's how we had to get on. Sorry. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're not picking on anyone. We're all I'm sure I'm gonna, I'm sure I'm gonna get a call from everybody else about how to do it. So anyway, if you get on the agenda, you should be able to connect. Now, I may not. You may have to copy and paste it into a empty tab on your webpage. It shows the hand, but I noticed when I clicked on it, it doesn't connect.
Doesn't work, yeah.
I'm not sure. The meeting ID is, well, it's a lot of, it's US06web.zoom.us and there's a J and a lot of numbers. There's a password, yeah, under meeting link, yep. No, I don't know. That's not, that's if you're calling by phone.
No, there's a
Right. Yeah. Yeah. You should be able to copy and paste that link because that's what we all had to do. It did work. Yep, you had to copy. No, you can't click. You gotta copy and paste. Right. Yeah, all right. Good luck.
Technical difficulties.
Well, Ed, Ed, I can't even copy and paste because I have one computer with the email and another computer that will talk to Zoom.
That's weird.
So I have to just type it.
Oh.
Yeah, it's okay. There's actually a meeting ID number that you can type right into Zoom and it's only nine digits and then the passcode's only five, so it's not too hard.
Shouldn't be that hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see the nine digits.
Yeah, that one, you just need those numbers. You don't need anything else if you, if you have a Zoom on a device.
Yeah, my computer lets me copy, so.
I can do that on my phone, but that gets, that's so, that has its other problems.
Yeah, technology. I'm hoping the reason other people aren't showing up is because they can't find the link.
I just sent him an email.
Good. I just, yeah, here it is. I see it. Now, while we're waiting, guys, I should tell you, we've been having a long conversation back and forth with the planner on Lot 170. And and it's, I'm hoping the land, the landowner joins us, but I don't see him, so.
Hmm, I don't think you should talk about it till the meeting starts.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to bring it up because it's got some serious issues. I'm not sure. I'll probably put that under new business agenda on the agenda. Right. Okay. We're the only one. I'm hoping we get more people. Sharon is not going to be able to make it. Sharon is on a cruise. I wish her I wish her a happy Happy cruise, what happened? Do that.
Who called it?
I don't see anyone.
Now, who were you talking to when somebody?
Oh, Jerry, I was talking to Terry Jones. Yeah, Terry Jones was trying to get in. This is not good, guys. It's past seven o'clock. I don't even see Tony on here.
I just texted him.
What's going on?
Oh, Tony said he's waiting to be admitted.
Oh dear. Oh, look at the waiting room. Oh, let me start doing that. I'm going down the going down the list here. Where's Terry? There it is. All right, who else? Is everybody here?
Uh, yeah, I think maybe, let me see. Okay, let me see now. I was just able to get in, so. So let me look at participants. So Tony Capone is here, Ed Lynch is here, Terry Jones is here, Bill Songs is here. Jim Ball is here, looking at the members. Stan is here. I don't see Jeremy, or do I see, I see Jeremy?
Yep, he's on.
So the only one who's not here tonight is Sharon.
Right, and Sharon is, I sent an email, she's not gonna be here.
Yeah, I know, so let me all right, so let me knock this down and get into minutes which I already have ready to roll. And so I knew that was coming. Then I'll be ready to go here.
Yeah, I'm sharing my screen so you can see the agenda. Or no, that's the minutes, you're seeing the minutes.
Yeah.
Sorry.
But I should be ready to go because I put I fiddled around with, hold on here. Oh, I don't want that. Hold on a second. Oh, maybe we're sure we're on the right document. All right. Almost there. And let me just check my roll call, but I think it's all done and ready to go. What the hell is going on here? Something screwed. Okay, I'm just gonna have to wing it.
Sure?
Yeah, yeah, the the minutes, hold on a second here. He keeps wanting to send me to the PDF copy of the minutes. I don't know. Give me one more second. I'm going back to why the hell? There's something funny with the minute setup, so I'm just gonna have to try to keep track of it and then Christina will have to take it from the, take it from the recording.
Yeah, we are recording right now.
Yeah, I knew that. All right, so anyway, I know, I know everybody's here and then Jim Ball will be appointed as the voting man.
Okay, good. So it is September 28th at 7:06. We'll call the the Water Pollution Control Authority regular meeting, a ledger to order. First, Tony, you've got the roll call, right?
Yes, sir, I just did that.
Okay. Good. So Ed Lynch, Tony Capone, Terry Jones, Stan Huber. Is Munir on? I don't.
I don't, yeah, you're right, I don't think so. He said he was gonna be here.
Munir is, is is absent. Okay, well, we got James Ball and we get Jeremy Norris. Am I missing anyone? Okay.
So that means that I'm also an alternate.
Yes.
I'm also a voter.
Right, you're replacing Sharon and James will be
replacing Munir.
Right, okay, good. Okay. Um, are there any residents or property owners? Surprised, okay. Review of approval of minutes. We have two minutes. We have the regular meeting and the special meeting. Don't see any I don't see anything unless you guys can pick something up here.
Yeah, on the, on the regular minutes, Terry sent me three or four editorial revisions and Christina will make those in the final copy.
All right, what were they? Do you know?
Uh, it's words. Terry's got them.
Yeah, it's, it's just, uh, one is to our two places, forced main instead of fourth main.
Okay.
And in one place, an AND was changed to an AN, so.
Okay. Yeah, those are minor. Yeah, those are just minor. All right, is there any other, any other corrections, additions, deletions? Omissions, I think. Did she get the, let me see, yeah, okay. Yeah, there was an issue with who was present. Okay, it looks, it looks okay. Any other discussion? I'll tell you what, let's go to, well, let's so all those in favor of approving the regular meeting minutes of 24th of August 2021 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the nays? Abstentions, hearing none, the minutes are approved. And we'll go to the special meeting minutes. And there they are. This was pretty short. Again, any you see any additions? I didn't. All right. Looks like it's pretty detailed and if there's none, there's no comments, additions on this. All those approve the special meeting of the 14th of September 2021 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, all those opposed, hearing none, they pass. Okay, we go to the operations report. I just want to highlight oh, that's not, it's not on here. The, the, there is okay, there's preparation lead testing, but there was a, this is kind of interesting. There is a request by the DPH to map all wells in Connecticut. It's a big job. I think it's being done by Yukon circa. And Grotten Utilities is handling this, which is nice. There's a, there's a lot of records that they have to go pick up. I'm not sure what this study will do other than I guess it's going to highlight the impact that wells have in our our water aquifer in Connecticut. So are there any questions or anything on the operations report? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on. Agent report finance. Let's get down. Boy, yeah, you can see that. Looks pretty normal to me. Income coming in about the same or a little higher than the normal monthly. The August looks about the same as July. Less, a little more in some cases. Year-to-day water. Budget, I don't see anything alarming. Let me see, there is one. Didn't want to see the water usage. It probably should be lower. It's not it's not telling us. It, it looks like it may be a little lower than subsequent years considering how wet it's been. And if you look at the numbers, that's what it looks like. Sewer report, I've got no we've had, we have to, the only thing is an agitator in the thickener. The feed tank to the thickener failed and we have to get a new agitator. I'm not sure what the cost will be. We'll get a quote on that. We're also trying to get quotes on the feed pump station system from the engineers. I actually just got one today. So send that on to Steve. Yeah, this is the sewer report. Oh, that's right, too. The generator failed. Oops, sorry. The generator failed. So they had to replace the control board. It failed during one of our windstorms. And apparently, we learned the hard way. Um, all right. This is the, the other thing I wanted to point out in the old business, we're gonna go to old business, the Fox Run, Ray said that the guys worked from nine to six to cut the concrete floor. They had two layers of rebar, so they, so the meter changed around four hours. So we got a new, we have a new meter in there. So that's, that's the good news. Let's see. We have awarded the the demo, the Galp Hill demo. What you're seeing here is this is the management approximate cost for Grotten Utilities to manage this project, which obviously we want them to do. We certainly don't want them to be cutting pipe that shouldn't be cut. So that's gonna be around $6,400, but it's an estimate. All right. So you should be aware of that. I have no further information on the Fairway Water Tower. No information on the Coal Bridge Interconnect. And we will be continuing this discussions on what we're going to be asking for is a request again for quote, for, we're asking people a quote on the demolition of Loftus Village Drive, Sablewood. And capping the well at Highlands. The Galp Hill Pump Station is is probably gonna be in there too. We're hoping to be able to sell that. Okay, so now we come to our favorite topic, yes.
Excuse me, before you leave that, going back to Steve Banks' report. Would you ask him if there isn't a periodic requirement to test the startup of the emergency generator?
Yeah, I will. I think there is. The board just failed. I guess it, you know, I do, I do know they do periodic testing. I need to get some information of how, you know, what period they use to test it.
Those things run a self-test every week.
Yeah, they do. Yeah.
But, but I had the same problem and it, of course, happened at the absolute worst time in 2002. And everything, the board, control board blew up. Yeah.
Yeah, that, I mean, obviously the testing would, would pick that up if it was ready to go.
Oh, well, it's just rolling the dice and it's an electronic part and it works perfectly fine till it blows up. So it's not something you would, you can tell until it fails.
Right. That's the same thing with your, yeah, I mean, if it's got a fuel injection or carburetor, that's, that's also well, it can fail then too.
Yeah, but yeah, the problem is that, yeah, it, it, it just fails at some random time. Now that, the, the the one we had, which was a big diesel monster, that board blew up twice in my, while I was in charge of it. And it's obviously somebody designed the board wrong.
Yeah, they probably put too much power through it somehow. Those boards see some very erratic power too. If you think about it. You know, they don't they're not taking city power because it's gone and now they gotta take the generator power. Guess what? That, that's not gonna be too clean. Yeah, it's a catch-22. I guess if you had a battery backed up on the control board, that wouldn't see the generator power, probably wouldn't do that. Yeah, I guess this is typical. But I'll ask Terry, okay? I'll find out if, and the other thing is, do we have a spare board? If this thing is gonna do what James says. We probably should keep a spare board around. Okay.
Chair, but another question before you go on. Did, did you say anything about the Fairway Drive Water Tower? Is there any news on that?
No, there's no news on that. I don't know. Looks like, I'm trying to figure out, hey, Tony, is Ray trying to get in? I did not see him on the call. Can you check to see if he's, he sometimes comes in late.
I'm looking. I don't see him waiting.
No, I didn't either. I just want to make sure that I wasn't, all right, fine. So I don't know, Bill, I, I think, I think we, you know, I'll have to ask Ray what's going on with that. Yeah, because we, you're right, it's the top of the tank and we really don't know what's on top there. Nobody knows.
Yeah, we're, we're coming up on winter, so we're gonna do something. It's gonna be
Yeah.
Have to be quick.
Yeah, it has to be done in the next month or so. All right, I'll, I'll get a note out to him.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're, we're to this wonderful, I know we wanted to do a workshop on this, but I had Matthew come in to join us to help us come up with a suggestion on how we might Come up with, um, a suggestion on how we might parcel. Uh, the, 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 you know, the, uh, flows to the various sections. So I have up here, you can see section A and B, C. D, E, and then F G. So those are the.
We're looking at what you're looking at, Ed.
Heck of my share. No, let me go back to the share. I don't know. I need to. You know, expand this up a little bit. Let me see where the share is.
You may have to unshare what you're, what you're sharing now and then.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to get to the, uh, trying to expand my, um. Yeah, here it goes. It's not showing it on the bottom. That's why I'm, I'm surprised I don't see the icon for share down here. Uh, where are you? It, it disappeared. That's great. Let me see if I can do this again.
And does it say at the top of your screen that you're? Are you, is your sharing paused? You should, you might have an orange warning at the top.
I'm going to put a new share. Let me see if this will work. Here we go. There. Alright, let me get that out of the way. Now are you seeing it?
Yep.
Okay. Well, sorry. Alright, so there are the sections. Now we know that, that, you know, some of these sections like B, which already has some existing and D, which, which is the town hall. And the, the police station, that, those, we, you know, we probably aren't going to be sharing much, uh, if not all, but I think A and. Well, I guess B would be too. A, B, I'm not sure about C. And then we have the question of E. So, okay, Matthew, I'm going to let you, uh, kind of share what you've got in your calculations here.
Oh, I do this. Um, can you, can you allow me to share my screen now?
Yeah, I will. I'll stop.
It says I don't have access. Yeah.
Yeah, no. Now, how do I, now how do I do that? I stopped sharing.
So, so right-click Matt's name.
Whatever you did, it worked, I think.
Yeah, that worked. Okay. Yeah, I'm clicking around. There you go.
Hey, yeah, it works. At least you're not, uh, banging the top of your computer screen. So, um, hey, this isn't really a presentation, but, uh. I, I, I just put this together like this so we can, um, we can share the slides later when, when this is over, but, um. I'm just, just kind of stepping through real quick. These are, these were the phases that we talked about last time. Um, kind of zooming in. Looked at the plant capacity, try to figure out like, well, what would be, would be a realistic flow. Really, the number was a hundred and four thousand gallons a day. So, um, this is, this is basically the new slide where we looked at, um. We looked at the parcels that we identified and then we looked at them based on, uh, acreage. Um, actually, I, I, since our discussion, right, we basically deleted out parcel D here. Um, because that one's all set. Um, so what, what I went through is. I just grabbed this, the parcel size right from your, um, your online GIS web viewer.
Hey, excuse me? Um, Ray Valentini is trying to get in. He just sent me a text.
Let's get Ray in. We need to talk to him later. Did you get him in? Here, where is he? Miles, hmm, I don't see him.
Yeah, but we've got R. Kelly.
Is that Ray?
I don't know, but R. Kelly is, is not, I guess he's not in prison.
This is RJ Kelly.
Yeah, I don't see Ray on here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm having the same problem. I usually they give a list. I don't see him.
I, I can look, I'm looking at the participant list and he's not on the participant list.
He's got to be in the, uh, room. You got to look at the room.
Okay, yeah, he just, uh, he just said he was trying to get in and he can't.
Where's my room? Sorry, uh, we're trying to find. It's not showing, it's not showing the room anymore, so I guess.
I wonder if he's in the wrong link.
Yeah.
Somebody texted me and said that the link was bringing up last month's meeting.
Yeah, he, uh. Where, let me see if I got an email from him. He should be, um. Yeah, he should be going to a different link.
If you, if you, um, I found if I clicked the meeting link on the agenda, it did not work, but if you. Copy and paste that agenda.
Yes, that's what you have to do.
So he, he's probably just clicking it.
Yeah. Let me give Ray that. Let me see if I can find that link.
Or you have to go to the PDF version and, and copy that one because that's, that's there as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
The link did not work. I.
You have to copy and paste it. It, it's not going to, okay, I got it. Let me see if I can send him an email.
So, so could we just check and see who's on this call? Does anybody know who RJ Kelly is?
No idea.
I'm, I'm doing this for a homework project or a homework assignment. I have to, uh, take notes. In reflection on the meeting.
Okay, good. Thank you. And who's Mo Duarte?
I'm from Grotten Utilities.
Okay, thank you.
Is Catherine with Weston and Sampson?
No, I'm also here for school.
I'm sending Ray the link. I hope he can. Alright, I hope we can see. Alright, we can, I think we can continue on, um.
Alright. So basically what we did is we, um, from your, your online, um, parcel viewer for the town. We pulled out the parcel sizes for the, for the parcels that we identified last month at the meeting. For, um, providing sewer service in the future. And, um, then what we did was we, we set up. My goal was to have, try to have twenty thousand gallons per day of, uh, you know, what I like to call miscellaneous infilling. Which would be like if, if there's a developed lot that didn't match, uh, wasn't on one of these, one of these lettered parcels like. Let's say kind of this town center area here. Or maybe, you know, you got a couple, a couple little lots kind of through here. The idea was that the twenty thousand gallons per day could be distributed amongst that, like if, let's say the supermarket. Wanted to, um, increase by thirty percent or something like that. So then, then what we, what I did was go through and, and say, come up with. Um, if you, if you have a maximum capacity of a hundred and four thousand gallons per day. For this, this center area, um, let's divide it out based on parcel size. And that's, this is the table that we kind of come up with, which shows how, how many gallons per day. For the different parcels that we would get. And then, um, you know, I said twenty thousand gallons per day, but then I, I adjusted it just a little tiny bit. So that way everything adds up right back up to a hundred and four. So we have a nice even number at the end. So you're like, so where does, where does that put, put us, Matt? Um, so, so kind of coming down, so, and I, I did want to point out that, um. You know, you can see like parcel B has seventeen acres. Where, and so they get like, you know, twelve thousand nine hundred gallons per day. Um, parcel A gets, had about twenty-five acres, so they have quite a bit more of about nineteen thousand gallons a day. But then if you look, parcel E kind of skewers thing a little, a little bit because they had, they have over thirty-four acres of land. So then that, that number comes up even higher, twenty-six thousand gallons per day, which is higher than what we originally expected. Um, so if you wanted to compare. The previous, um, two scenarios where we did the development scenario verse. Just going straight, strictly by, by, um, parcel size. Um, you can see the, the wastewater flows are allocated a little differently. I mean, this is. This is much, a much more fair way to do it because it's, you have a certain size, you get a certain flow. And it's, it's just a ratio, um. And it adds up, the, the total adds up to the available capacity. And you also, we, we still maintain your infilling ability for, for some of the, the developed plots that would otherwise be left out. Who might look for sewers in the future. Uh, but, but you can't, you can kind of see the comparisons a little bit like parcel A. Kind of the original development scenario was like eighty-six thousand gallons a day. And now we're, you know, we're a little less than twenty, so we're, we're about a fourth of, uh. You know, what they were thinking they would get there. That's, that's probably the most striking, uh, difference. Um, and I, I think, I think the idea really was to maybe develop parcel A a little more densely. And maybe, um, parcel E always seemed to be kind of like a long-range plan of not, not really putting. A huge amount of development on it. So I'm not really sure where, where we, we should go with this.
Yes, well, I have questions. Okay, first of all, uh, what happened to F and G that both had, uh, business, both had commercial buildings?
Oh, this, actually, this is, um. This is F. I, I, the, the number, the, yeah, this is, this one was, this one would be F and the next one would be G.
Okay, the other thing is that, uh, when we, when we closed out our meeting the last time. I think it was Stan that said that we should come up with a. A goal for commercial versus residential.
Right, to skew toward commercial and reserve more of it for commercial use.
When I presented this, uh, topic to the EDC and, and others. They, they understood that kind of rationale, but they also said. You know, if you don't have a certain amount of residential kind of to seed the whole development. Then it, it won't be as appealing to the businesses, so you don't want to, you don't want to, you know. Totally sacrifice residential sewer use to, to commercial. Uh, the third item I would like to point out is that in some of these larger parcels. Yeah. Uh, there may be room for septic for residential, so I think, I think we've got to go back and look at. The use of each of the lettered parcels in commercial versus residential and, and see what the possibilities are.
So, yeah, so I, I, I talked with that a little bit about that offline, um. And, and the, the issue with dividing, for, for having, having your engineer come in and say that. Um, parcel A is going to have, um. Twenty thousand gallons per day of residential and forty thousand gallons per day of commercial is, is, um, would be a very arbitrary thing for me to say. Um, and it's not, it wouldn't be legally defensible, you know, for my, if, if you say, well, where's your scientific or your engineering? Method to decide that. So, so if, if we, by, by saying like. The parcel is broken down based on land area. And then it's up to P and Z to decide what the density of residential and commercial is on that parcel. Um, that, that would kind of maintain the spirit of, of letting, letting the P and Z decide. The development density and the type of development density. Um, and then you're right though. If, say parcel, parcel A, the, the acreage only allows, say, twenty thousand gallons per day, according, based on this method. Um, if they wanted to mix some grinder pumps and then in other parts of the site, put a couple of septic systems. Because now the density for septic would be less because we're supplementing it with sewer. Um, I, I, I think that could be a path forward. Alternatively, you can, you can come in there and say, well, you know. The, the, the expectation is that we, we weren't going to sewer all of parcel E. Because parcel E is pretty, pretty gigantic there. It always, in all the studies I've seen, it was kind of like. Someday, maybe in the future, some of it would be developed, not the whole thing. And that certainly skewers some of the flow. Kind of away from this focus area a little bit. So that, that might be another thing we can cut back on.
Uh, excuse me, sorry. Yeah, I think Ray's in the, uh, he say he made it in. He's just waiting to be let in.
I think I let him in. You should.
Just got in. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I saw you.
So, comment, comment about, um, parceling by, uh, commercial and, and residential. I believe that a municipality has the legal right to. Save some capacity of a plant for residential versus commercial. So I think that kind of what you were saying, Matt. Um, leave it up to P and Z, but I don't think it should be done by parcel. I think that puts P and Z in a difficult position too. But let's say a developer comes with parcel X and says, I want to do all residential. I think P and Z can say, no, you can't because you're going to use all of our capacity. So when we get to the point that P and Z has allowed all of the residential that they've allocated. That's when the residential development stops. I think that's how you do it.
Other, I mean, other, yeah, otherwise you can go in there and, you know, just say, uh. For all lots, you can say something like sixty percent residential, forty percent commercial. But it's, I mean, it's. That, I mean, I can't, I can't give you much more of an analysis than, than this, just kind of a rule of thumb. And you guys could pick the ratio however you want, but, but that's, that's more of a community planning thing, which really should come from. Planner, you know.
Yeah, most of that area is in the Ledgerd Center Design District. Which is, the primary usage is commercial with sort of accessory use for residential allowed. Uh, commercial on the first floor with one or two-bedroom apartments above commercial. So it is primarily commercial.
The, yeah, and the, but it just, it sounds like the recent discussions have been like, well, we need, we need the residential to support the commercial, so to. You, you know, I, I think we're talking about this in the wrong meeting, but, but it sounds like they, they need a higher. Proportion of residential to commercial, but yeah, we can cert, but again, so, so if we go, you know, we can flip, flip around the ratio. But, but again, I, I think, I think if you, if you were to give P and Z a capacity per lot, you know. They might, they might want A to be more heavily residential and B more heavily commercial. I, I don't know. Or maybe C is going to be entirely residential. Um. I, you know, that's, that's the, the magic of planning.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they, that, the, the legit, the center district has mixed use where they have shops on the first floor. And possible residential on the second and third floor, something you've seen around New England. Um, so, uh, you know, so that. You know, how do you, you know, how do you divvy that up other than it's, it would have to be considered one unit? I mean, I.
Even, well, even that, even that description, you're talking about, uh, thirty percent commercial and sixty percent. Or, you know, seventy percent of residential on that, just. If you really stop to think about how that ratio works out, you know, first floor, commercial, second and third floor are residential, it, uh. It always seems to skew a residential. So I, so that's why I'm hesitant. I'm hesitant to, you know, to, to try to like. Put my, my own personal judgment in, in this, this presentation for that.
Right. But the other thing is lot A has a very high water table. Did, did you look at water tables and? Perk rates and all that.
What we did, we, we have that information, um, in, in terms of, in term, again, in terms of divvying, divvying up like the capacity. I, I didn't, I didn't want to show, with this analysis, we're not showing favoritism for one lot or the other. If, if we go back to, um, actually, we can see it right here on the slide. If you go back to like the fifty percent development scenario that we talked about last month, you can see that. That we don't, we do show favoritism based on how these lots were anticipated for development in the past. You can see A has much higher capacity. Or, or, or kept, uh, allocated for sewers, whereas B, B, we actually, if anything, maybe six fifty was, was much too low. But you, you can see how, you can see how it kind of swings a little differently. I mean, so there's different, there's different ways to do this. Um, if they have high, high groundwater in A, um, you know, the, the plan that they were shown for development, there were, they're going to have. I don't know, thirty little septic systems. Um, it looked like they all had to be pump systems. And may, maybe they would have been mounted. I'm not sure how that really would have worked out, but, um, but yeah, that's, that's something to consider.
Did, did you see the, uh, plan that the owner of parcel B has for development? He's, he wanted a hu, he wanted sixty-two apartments on B and I think he has other eyes for A. Did you see his plan? He, he wanted a hu, he wanted sixty two apartments on B, and I think he has other eyes for A. Did you see his plans?
I don't know if I saw the, the, the plans for B with the sixty something lots. I'd have, I'd have to go back and check. I, I, the one that I just. I can't get out of my head was the one for A.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, so I think, I think the plan you were looking at was a. Uh, uh, an exercise of what could be done. And I think the owner of parcel B is now look, well, the, of the old school, it's not all parcel B, but, but he's. Planning to develop from the school back with apartments. And I believe he's also in talks with the owner of parcel A to put apartments there. But my point was. We, we should be looking at what's actually being proposed. And then if we think that we can put houses on the larger lots with septic. My comment about A having a water table is that we probably can't do that. You have to have septic for A and B.
Uh, sewer, yeah.
And, and.
Sewer, sorry, yeah. And looking at, I mean, looking at B, like, um, I didn't really have very good mapping to. To be able to like cookie cutter things out, but it looks kind of, kind of if you follow this. Kind of follow this line here. I kind of, to me, that kind of looks like wetlands.
It is.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
But, um, if you look at the, the, um, Hydrick Soil Mapping. For, for the state, it actually didn't identify it as wetlands. So, but, but that. That would actually reduce the size of, the, the buildable size of B quite a bit. And West Cog actually did that analysis for the state. For what's the buildable area of these lots and, um, nothing really would popped out. The only, the only thing that popped out was actually down, kind of down here in this, this area here that was identified, but that doesn't really help us for what we're doing today.
That dark area by letter B is actually a pond.
Yeah, that, right, yeah, you could see, yeah, you could see that clearly, yeah.
I thought the community well around there too. Isn't Squire a community well?
Yeah, back, back here somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Let's, I want to say like, you could probably even see that it's a little white dot if you look really close, yeah. So, so yeah, so I, so I mean, I, so I did go through. It seems like you're, uh, everybody's much less satisfied with the, the concept of just breaking this up by strict, um. Acreage of parcels. Uh, I'm not, I'm actually not surprised because when I did it, I always said, oh, that's. That's kind of like counterproductive to what we had before. Um. So, so going back to what we had before, which would be the fifty, fifty percent development scenario, seems like a better option for, for the development and. The only thing I could see is maybe, uh, maybe we lower E. Because, because, because realistically, you know, are we, would we bifurcate that parcel and say, you know, we're only going to develop part, part of it? And then, and then reallocate some of this flow up. Up to maybe lot, you know, I would say probably lot B could, could use another twenty thousand gallons a day.
Absolutely.
Now, remember, E is in the watershed, so septic may not be an option in, in the E development.
Right.
But then. More high density development.
Yeah, we're right, correct, high density, I would say, right. Yeah, that. It, because the watershed line goes right down one seventeen, I think.
Anyway, so, so he, I mean, so there's, there's always that potential that someone might want to develop E. I, I don't see. I mean, I guess I could see, I'm just thinking, what you, would you put back there? You don't really have road frontage to have a, um. Have, have something that's going to attract people for commercial unless you're going to go with. You know, I could see condos or something, but, but again, so that's why I'm saying like, maybe we cut back on E and then. Or, or eliminate E and allocate it to, to what's left. To A and B.
Yeah, you can do that.
It's, it's your decision or we, or we just cut, we, maybe we just cut back and say fifteen. I mean, so now this, this is getting a little arbitrary, but then we have another thirty thousand. We, we can make this up, you know, make this one fifty three thousand and then we can add another twenty here. Like, I gotta, this pen's too thick.
All of the plans in the past have looked at the east side of one seventeen and a long one seventeen for development. And E was always future. So when, even when Yukon did their study with the map that you looked at, Matt. E was always future stuff. The, the real development was lots A and B, F, G. Along, and this, this Fairway Drive, which currently ends in a cul-de-sac, you can faintly see there is a roadway that runs in a curve. Through the letter A and comes out on one seventeen. So that's where all the development potential was envisioned.
So then, yeah, and, and the, the only reason why I'm, I'm including E is because it, because everyone keeps saying it, well, it's a future.
Yeah.
Future build out area. So if, you know, I look at this, we're planning for the next fifty years, future, um, if. Uh, we could also just strike it out as zero, make that a zero, and then if they want to develop it, it's a septic lot and that's. You know, that's a decision that, whether we go one way or the other, it really has a very, very, um, significant impact.
I think you have to let the market decide because if you, you can't put septic on E, therefore they have to have. Sewer to develop. And if you tell them they can't have sewer that. You know, that's shaky ground. But the market, I think, will happen, the market will drive development faster along. Fairway Drive, A, B, F, G and that, in there more quickly, I think, than it will on E.
Well, well, so another, other, another idea, so if we took, we took ten thousand. Of this forty five to go here and then we took another twenty to here. So now we're, um, sort of thirty thousand, so we have fifty, we had fifteen thousand left of the forty five. So why don't we just. Why don't we just add it down here for another fifteen? And then that, that would have to come from, if you ever develop lot D, it would come from your infilling number. There you go. Do that.
Yep. Yeah, we can do that. That's good.
And then it's become zero. But, I mean, this actually seems like a decent plan, except, uh. Are you okay with, with F and G right now? We're, we're basically showing, that's, um. That's like, that's kind of like a one or two bedroom apartment or, 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 uh, house on each lot. I think maybe. Or really, really small office, maybe you want to bump those up to, I don't know, four hundred gallons, five hundred gallons each and then take that out of your infilling.
What, what, what acreage is, is F and G? What was the?
Um, they're each about an acre.
Oh, there's, okay, so that makes sense. That's fine. Yeah, we can bump that up a little bit. To four hundred. I mean, that's about a, a family of four size, isn't it?
Yeah, four hundred, yeah, four hundred's a probably a four bedroom house.
Four bedroom, right. That's what I thought. Okay.
F and G are in the Ledgerd Center Design District though, which should be primarily commercial with apartments above.
Yeah, that, that's where we'd want future retail, as, as Stan says, and apartments above.
So if you, well, F and G, if you, um, if you were to put office space there, forty, four hundred gallons a day for office space goes pretty far. Same, same thing with, same thing with retail, actually.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
I think re, what's retail, twenty, twenty gallons a day an employee, but that includes a factor safety one and a half, where you could do. Point one gallons per day per, uh, square foot, I think it was.
We, we wanted to put a micro brewery in the old school, but. I was told that a, a brewer uses ten thousand gallons of water a day that it has to dispose of. Does that make sense?
Well, that's how popular it is, I guess.
Well, they got cleaning. So, so, you know, obviously that's an operation that requires a septic, um. You know, what they call clean in place and sterile in place. So they use a lot of water. But here's the deal, guys. A lot of states require them to have their own pre-treatment. So they can't just dump it into the sewer.
We're, so, so as an, as an aside, uh, in Milford, Connecticut, they want to. There's a brewery that wants to put, um, fifty thousand gallons a day of, of their, their high strength wastewater into the sewer system and that. That's basically something like thirty or forty percent of their plant capacity for nutrient removal, just because it's such. High strength stuff, um. So, so no, I, you know, I, typically if you have a brewery on a sewer system, you, you, you would insist that they have their own pre-treatment system.
Yeah. So you're killing the bugs is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, no, you're overfeeding them. So because you're overfeeding them, you, you need, um, you need a lot of extra oxygen to. To keep them from being fat, fat, dumb and sleepy.
Okay, they call that B O D and they have to reduce the B O D.
Yeah.
And that, so we can take their water, but they have to pre-treat it. To a point where it doesn't hurt, it doesn't hurt the plant.
It just takes so much longer to, for the same value of, that volume of, uh, brewery, brewery waste compared to a, a, a household waste. That probably takes about, you know, maybe ten or twenty times more effort at the plant to break it down. So, so it actually does cost you money.
Got it.
Except that.
Right, I, I think we're good with what you have there. I mean, I don't, I mean, the numbers, A, B, C, D. And then F, G and, uh, infilling. I think we can, you know, we could go and probably sell this to the town, see what they're, what the comments would be.
Parcel C is in the multi-family design district with a maximum of one dwelling unit per seven thousand square feet.
Yeah.
So no commercial there, just residential.
So, so at thirteen thousand gallons per day, that was, that was how they calculated, um, that was based on the Habitat for Humanity Development. Where they had, I, I want to say sixty something homes that they were planning. So.
Be a good number to use.
So if we, if we wanted to hold that number of, of thirteen thousand and pull it forward.
And then have to get seven thousand from the infilling.
Yeah, I mean, so we're, we're cut, it's, it's just a game of moving the numbers around a little bit. But, but yeah, we can. You know, we're, we're taking this infilling number, we bumped it up and then we're going to just, we're going to, we're going to subtract, track, subtract some things out of it. See here, you guys are going to make me do math on TV here. I don't know. Let's see here.
It seems like when, when all is said and done, the only thing we can do is provide an example and, and it's going to be up to planning and zoning because. Uh, you know, they, they have to make a determination of how they're going to use these parcels and, and, and. See the implications of, uh, you know, on the use of the available sewer.
Well, you, you, as, as a sewer commission, you can certainly come in and say that. But, you know, we will accept a sewer application on A that uses up to fifty three thousand gallons per day. And if they, if they submit something that, that the numbers come out higher, then you, you would reject it because that doesn't, that's not what you voted. To prove your approved plan.
Well, I, I, it sounds like it goes beyond our, uh, charter. To tell them that how to use the land. All, all we have to do is say. You know, our plant can handle this much and, and, you know, your total development. Concept has got to stay within that. I don't see we can reject any plan that, fighting is owning.
Well, you could, no, you can, you can say that, you know, we've, we have a flow out, we, we voted to approve a flow allocation plan. For the town center area. These parcels have a total of this capacity because there's, we have, um, capacity limitation in the pipe. Carrying the flow to the plant and the plant itself. So, so therefore to, to preserve capacity for the remaining property owners in this plan. You're, you're limited to, uh, connect up to fifty three thousand gallons per day of wastewater flow. If you go over that. You have to find other provisions to, to manage that.
But right, we're, we're not telling them what to, how to do development. We're telling them this is what we can service and.
Yeah, correct.
You, I, I don't think it's up to us to say that parcel A can only use fifty three thousand. I think if. If they, if they come up with a total of a hundred and four thousand and do it differently, how are we going to object to that?
You said, you, then you, if they come up with a hundred and four thousand, you say we can't accept that because, because then that leaves no capacity for B, C, F. F or G and then.
No, no, you're misunderstanding, Matt. I'm not just talking about A. I'm talking about the whole thing. That we can't tell them how, what A should look like. All we can do is say that the total has got to be one oh four or, or less.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, you're right.
Terry, I think this is, this is taxpayer money paying for an asset. And I think the municipality has. The, the right to allocate the asset within reason. In other words, you, you know, one guy, one guy can't have it all when the taxpayers paid for it. I don't think.
No, that's, Bill, I wasn't saying that. I'm saying, what, what Matt was saying was like. If they came in and said they wanted more than fifty three thousand gallons per day for A, that we would reject it. And I'm saying, no. We just need to keep them in mind of what the total capability is that they have to use and they better use it judiciously.
Yeah, I, I think the, the, the problem with that approach though is if A goes in and takes all a hundred and four thousand. It leaves B and all the other areas without it. How do we prevent that, Terry? I, I see your point. So we're not.
Because we communicate to planning and zoning that, you know, your total development has got to stay within this limit. So you, you ought to have a plan of development for the, the Ledgerd Center. That has a concept of, of breaking it down between commercial and residential. And keeping an eye on the fact that the total.
Right, yeah.
Capacity is only going to be a hundred and four thousand gallons per day.
You're saying planning and development has to make that decision, not W P C A.
That's what I believe.
I, I would agree, yeah.
So, so would you? We just have to hold them to a budget.
Right, they, 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 they're going to need guidance, guys. I mean, we're, you're, you're right, Terry, but we, we, they're going to come to us and say, well. We want to do this in A. Can you give us kind of a number we can work with, with A?
And that's what we're doing. We're saying this is approximately how we see it being envisioned. If you're going to deviate significantly. You need to take that into account.
Yeah, that's great. That's a, that's a good outlook.
Right, but as each developer comes in and, uh, you know, somebody, uh, who wants to develop all of A. And they've got some commercial, retail, mixed use, some pure residential. And they, they need to come in with a, a budget for the, the, um. Wastewater to be handled. And, you know, we look at and say, well, you know. If you do that much, then that's going to limit your use of all the other parcels. I mean, it's, it's all trade-offs. And they, uh, the planning and zoning people will have to know that, you know, you, you, you allow. So many gallons per day for, uh, two bedroom, so many for a four bedroom, uh, so much for an office that has. Uh, you know, ten employees, whatever. You, you need to give them rules of thumb so that they can see the impact of. Proposed developments.
Yeah, I, I, I do like Terry's idea because I, on the, on the flip side of, of this, um. Trying to allocate flows, um, even, even when you, you step back and say like, um. This part of town has, um, of allocation of fifty three thousand gallons per day. Let's forget about a single parcel. Um, planning and zoning has a way of, um. Getting greedy with, with development scenario sometime. And then they say, oh, well, we're going to put forty thousand gallons per day, you know, of, of. Development, then, then another application comes in for another twenty thousand, something year over. And you said, what, we just planned all that and you just blew the plant out of the water. So if you make them keep track of. Of what their total budget is for, for wastewater management, um, maybe they'll be a little more responsible with it. So it's not, it's not a bad idea.
That's fine.
So, so we'll, we can update this table and this will be, this would be the W P C A's recommendation that the P and Z follows, but, but they're. They're certainly going to want to tweak it as, as developers come in and promise, promise the moon.
Yes. Has planning and zoning been introduced, any of this?
Y- yes, they have. We had a, we had a meeting with them. Uh, and this, uh, actually this slide deck was presented to them. Uh, and to Nate and to Juliet, the planning and zoning, uh, officials. So. So that, yeah, that, that's been presented. They, they were kind of waiting for this final thing of, you know, what, what recommendations we have. Um, in terms of the flow. So this is the final piece. And I'm assuming we're going to have a public hearing on this. And we are going to have a public hearing, I just don't know when.
And this has not been presented to the whole planning and zoning, it's, it's only been presented to Nate and to Juliet.
Correct, that's correct. And to friend.
And of course to me, but.
Right, and, and the mayor. And so it's, it's been presented. Um, you know, and I don't know it, you know, I, I'm not exactly sure what. Um. You know, how, how that process goes. So I imagine if you have a public hearing, you know, that all are invited and can make comments. Um, and I'm sure planning and zoning, if they, I, I, you know, I'm not sure. I know that we had, uh, entertained presenting to planning and zoning, but we were told you guys were too busy. So. Right, right now in the next few months, you were just way too busy. So, I don't know when that'll happen. So. Um, all right, any other comments before we, I'd like to go back. Uh, now that Ray's on here, Ray, I just wanted to. Now that Ray's on here, Ray, I just wanted to just get some, if you have any updates on, let's see, what was it? On, oh, on the tank? Is, is there any updates on the tank? Let's see.
Paint, painting the center tank.
Here it is. Yeah, that, about painting the, and, and what's on top of the tank? Do we know anything about that?
The fair. No, I haven't. We're waiting for a new belt to climb the tank. Our other belt was deemed old by our safety director. So we ordered a new one, and like everything else, it hasn't shown up yet. But I was hoping to show up this, this month, so I can get them up there. Okay. With that, basically, as we looked at the tank, Ed, and I stopped up before, it's, you know, over 15 years, oh, close, close to 15, I think it is, and 20 years is the, the, you know, usual lifetime of that. So either way, if you're looking to paint it, you know, you should, you should plan it.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, okay, that, that will, will, we'll put that on the, the, the discussion for for next month. We'll, we'll look at that. Not gonna be cheap, guys, I'm gonna carry that. Then we have the Holberg tank, although that's a little bit younger.
Holberg is totally different because it's concrete. So that, that's, that's good for, it doesn't look that bad, probably needs to be power washed. But we did inspect it not more than five years ago, so no one wasn't doing too bad. Had some stuff inside, but either one of those tanks, we take them, well, center's gonna be hard if we take it down to paint inside. Obviously, we're gonna have to have some kind of pneumatic system run in the, the area for, until that's done.
Okay. Um, I don't think there's any other updates. I did show them your proposal for managing the Gallup Hill tank demo.
Yeah, and that, that's just an estimate. Most of the time, you know, the most biggest work is the water part of it. Trying to get all that shut off and, and have them do that. I mean.
Right.
They shouldn't be there that long, but we just threw the, that number out. And also, the meter is in that Fox, I was in last month, I didn't put in this month's report because this is a month behind. So we did change it out, and waiting to see what the end of the month read comes out to be.
Yeah, that's my curious question there is, hopefully, it's, it's running better, we're getting better numbers, not giving away water. Is there anything else before we move on to new business? I, I would like to recommend it, a change, an addition to the agenda, and that's to talk about lot 170 off of Gallup Hill. I just received today a huge amount of correspondence on that, that I want to share with you. So, yeah, are there any, any objections to adding that to the agenda? Not, not hearing none, we'll, we'll make that item number four. Uh, new business. So Terry, you're on, EDC update. Sorry I couldn't make that.
Yeah. I, I conveyed your regrets. Yeah, as it turned out, Ed, that was a lot more than an EDC meeting. The, the mayor had invited a number of people, some business owners. There were two women there from the state that gave a presentation. So I, it's probably good that I just, I didn't know what I was walking into. So, you know, but fortunately, I, I, I spent some time going through Matt's slides and I could deliver it and, and handle most of the questions. So they, I think they got an appreciation for, you know, the, the capability and, and where we are. And I think that's, that is enough to prime their discussions that they need to have about development, whether it will be as previous proposals have indicated, which was, you know, what Weston and Sampson used in their presentation, which is very reasonable. But, you know, if it, if it's raised from that, then, then obviously they have trade-offs to make. And that's the idea of, of, you know, having a wastewater budget that they have to live within. I, the, I, I think overall, the, the Weston Sampson brief was well-received and, and there were only a few questions. And, and of course, one of the questions was with regard to what would it take to increase our overall wastewater treatment capacity? And I frankly, you know, just from our conversations tonight, you know, it's not too early to start thinking about that because, you know, we aren't gonna live, you know, we aren't gonna live for more than, say, two decades within this limit, if, and, or we're gonna stop development totally.
Right. And I, and I think, you know, I, I've always been thinking that that is something we, we will be planning for in the future. The plant itself has the ability to expand mechanically, it's just the land area we need to dispose of the circulation of water. And there's some technologies that have, that have actually accelerated being able to do that. So, so I thi- I think it's a, it's a bright future. You know, we, we, we could consider over, over time, presenting to the town an opportunity to expand the plant. And, and we should be, and we should be thinking about making sure that the equipment we put in there can handle that additional flow rate. I mean, that, that, we, so we should be thinking forward to be able to do that. So anyway, that's a, that, good, thanks, Terry. That's.
Well, you might ask, since Tony was there, you might ask him if, if he had a different impression than I did.
Uh, no, I had the same impression you had.
All right, good. Nothing to add. Okay.
Quick question.
Yes.
In the, or just our previous discussion, that maximum wastewater that we could handle, our, our budget, did that include the upgraded line at the very end? So is that the absolute maximum?
Yeah, that, that's, that budget is, it's really based on how much capacity you would have at the plant if you, right now, the plant has
Right.
About 54,000 gallons per day of unused, and then there's 80,000 gallons per day of
All right, so that was.
100,000 gallons of II, yeah.
Right, that was, that was assuming that all the lines were as big as they could be.
If all the lines are as big as they can be, and you remove half of the clean water leaking into your system, you know, you're about 104.
Right, I thought, I thought your question was more like, is that five-inch line and three-inch pressure line gonna be able to handle higher flows? I think it would be able to, if the plant could, was expanded.
Yeah, and if, if, knowing what you're asking, you know, we could, we can, we can try to design that pipe diameter to be slightly larger than it's needed to be, but within reasons that you won't have operational issues.
Right.
But there is an upper limit for, you start having issues with it, kind of clogging up because it's too big.
Right.
It's kind of, kind of ironic, actually, but.
It settles out.
Yeah.
Dokes a lot.
And, and one, just one more comment on the EDC meeting. There was some, there was a good amount of discussion about the, the fact that closing Ledger Center School has reduced foot traffic in, in the Ledger Center area. So in looking at development, they're, they're certainly interested in the kind of residential development that's going to generate foot traffic because if businesses are gonna move in there, most of them are gonna, they're, they're gonna be smaller, they're kind of like what we have now in the, in the Ledger Center School. And so they, that was, their point was that we, that planning and zoning, and also the planning and zoning really needs to look at building up residential areas there to generate the foot traffic, otherwise businesses aren't gonna want to move in.
Yeah, that, yeah, that makes sense, because you have to drive, otherwise.
And that means things like senior housing, which I know have been suggested because seniors don't drive as much, and seniors would be looking to walk to businesses, not necessarily sunset houses, subsidized housing, but multifamily housing, the same thing. They would be people to be less likely to, to drive across the river, for example, and more likely to walk across the street.
Right, and, and I think, I mean, we're not, we're, we're looking at a smaller area. I mean, you gotta look outside of what we're looking at, too. And besides D.
Oh, yeah.
You, you really have to expand a little bit.
Hey, Ed, is there any way I could share my screen, screen real quick? I, I wanted, I, I just wanted to show you what we agreed to for this.
Yeah. Go ahead. You should be able to share now.
All right, so if you, if you look real quick, I, oops, I clicked the wrong thing there. What I just did is I added that recommended flow allocation table. And I re-totalized the numbers for you guys to, to show you how, how we kind of like move things around a little bit. Parcels D and E really would be not applicable because they, they would come from the infilling as well as some of the other lots, but, but your infilling, you still have 17,000 gallons per day to allocate elsewhere. The, the reason why I wanted to sneak this in at this meeting is because, because when this meeting's over, I can just email this slide stack to, to Ed for distribution with this recommended allocation included, just to save us a whole month. So.
Yes, good. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, let me, let me go back. I only have a couple of things to go over. Let's share the agenda. Okay, so we don't have, I don't, well, I don't have any status right now in the waste treatment facility feed pump station, except that Weston Sampson did submit a, a, a concept bid that I just got today. So, so I have not seen anything. We, we will have to go out for quotes on this. It's, it's significant, it's gonna be significant enough to go beyond our limit in the town. So the other, before we, let's see, item number three is the vote to approve Weston Sampson's invoice. It's for, it's invoice number 9211349 for the amount of $15,915. And that's for the final analysis for the future build-out conditions and the proposed sewer capacity, treatment plant capacity remaining. Okay.
So moved.
So moved, good. Any discussions? This is, it's, it's part of our, it's part of our original budget. You can see the contract amount was for 34.5, the amount billed to date is 24.550. Any other comments? Hearing none. So I make a, a vote to approve the Weston Sampson invoice 9211349 for the amount of $15,915. All those approved signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed or abstaining? Hearing none, it's, it's approved. Now, the, the, the other item is number four that I, it's not that we're, the new, we put on the agenda, and that's 170 Gallup Hill. Where this is a real circus.
Can I, you, you think I could jump off now?
Yes, you guys can leave. This is, you know, we're, we're just talking about the typical WPCA business.
Thank you, guys. Good night. Good luck tonight. Thanks, bud.
Okay, so, as you know, Stan, you had pointed out that the application I got was filled out for.
It was pre-checked to prove.
Ledger, well, I just got some news tonight that's even more shocking. And, you know, I don't, I got this from planning and zoning, and I would like to read it. It's actually from Ledge, Ledge Health District. They're saying that those older lots were never approved for wells. This is from Wendy Brown. She says, with respect to 170, this is from Ledger Health District. With respect to 170 Gallup Hill Road, attaches the lot subdivision review letter from MLHD, which is referred to in the excerpted image that you attached. Also attaches the regulation 1913 B51M that concerns approvals of wells where community water service is available within 200 feet of the lot property. Please note that only the commissioner of DPH is able to grant well acceptance for such lots, and that the regulation was effective February 2nd, 1988. We have no record that an exception was ever granted by the commissioners for the DPH, of the DPH for this property. The reviewer did not have the authority to grant a well exception, and also apparently misunderstood that the distance requirement applied to the property line, not the house. I'm not able to approve a well permit for this property without an exception issued by DPH. So guys, we, I mean, I, you know, I had, we had this discussion before. It was, it was not, I'll, I'll admit that I couldn't submit this form because of the, what Stan had pointed out. I, I had a problem with it. However, I did sign it and, and, and denied the, the request. But I held on to the application because I thought the property owner was going to go to Groton Utilities to discuss the possibility of connecting north of the property where we're right now demoing Gallup Hill Tank. Now, I, that, that, that contract's been awarded. I think there was some dismay, maybe by the future, the property owner, that, that this was just a future thing, but it's happening. And, and on top of that, I, we told, Ray, and you, you heard it from us, we said, look, don't tear that, that line down that could service that property. So.
And I didn't, I did talk to him. He called, he did call the office, we had a discussion. He's looking to move in within, you know, a couple of months. He has a kind, I, I don't know how he, he's, his contract is for a well that he has from the, whoever he's having build his house. And so that's why he's in a rush to get this done. Because everything's tied up with, you know, his mortgage and everything to get this moving. So, you know, he asked me, he says, how long does it take? And I said, I don't know how long it's, the contract is gonna be, how long it takes to get all that, so might be a couple of months. And then the other part is everybody else has a well on that area. And how did they get that? That, one of them, one of the permits, I went back and found, I think, I sent it to Juliette, I don't know if she's, I think I sent it to you too, Ed.
Yeah.
That, that was signed back in 2006 with the well exemption for that, the Peter Gardner property subdivision. Even though it showed water lines on everything, everybody else got a well, except for this, for the, this gentleman. So it's, between both of them, I've been working on this with each one, and it's like, so, some, I, what I did ask him, so this is how we do well exemptions. The well exemption first comes in with a hardship letter, and I asked them both, and he did send a hardship letter, it wasn't, you know, whatever, but I said, you have to explain how much you're gonna, it's gonna cost to get to your house from the main to the property. If you want to meet out there, we can meet, go over it. We have an estimate, but ours is high. So you write down that you have a hardship because the price could be higher, and if you're way out there, the well's there, if there's wetlands, if there's drainage, there's some kind of, you have to give us a story. Nobody's really, I haven't got the story. I, I get a lot of phone calls telling me, oh, my well, they said they're putting in for $6,000. Why am the, I'm the only one that has to connect because everybody else didn't? No, that's not fair, and, you know, yada, yada. So that's what I'm getting into, and I, I've explained it to each one that, and then we send with our recommendation, what we do in city. Now, you, as the chairman, sign the letter saying that you agree with this, then it goes to Ledge Light, and it goes up to the state, and the state takes care of it after Ledge Light looks at it, or she can do it either way, back and forth. But that's, that's what usually happens. They'll look at us if we sign off on it, or if you sign off saying, but there has to be reason, it just can't be, number one, um, my house is way out there, so the house doesn't count because it's where the property line is. And your driveway was in, it's, what is it? I think it's 20 feet away from the water line. So that doesn't count.
Yeah, and the wet, the wetland concern, I, I actually approached planning and zoning on this property, and was pointed out to me by Mike Cherry. He says, he's got to put a driveway in. And the waterline, the waterline has to go with the driveway. It, it, it's not a wetland thing because he has to deal with the wetland with the. And the waterline, the waterline has to go with the driveway. It, it, it's not a wetland thing because he has to deal with the wetland with the driveway. And the, the water's inconsequential. The water line is absolutely inconsequential to the, to the wetland. So I went, oh, boy, that's true.
I, I explained that to him, and also what it is, is on, I think it's the one fifty property that's not closest to the tank. I don't know if that's a one fifty or a one seventy. I, I think it's the one, uh, one fifty. That has his property line. They each pointed a drawing. They each supposed to have a separate dri- uh, driveway. What they ended up doing on the plan is made one driveway that ran up the thing. So they each have access to the street, no matter, no driveway or not. Uh, so then they ran up and drew some lines in for water, and that's why nobody did it that way. But the water, the wetlands is true. I talked, uh, I've been talking to Juliet and trying to fill her on the history of what's happened, so you guys can talk, uh, or figure out what we want to do, because I'm not really, you know, I'll give you the advice stuff. I can't sign anything for you.
Yeah, yeah, Juliet, Juliet had gotten confused. She, she thought you guys were the signature, and I said, no, it's the WPCA.
Right, I explained that.
But this is putting us in a bind. Yeah, as you know, uh, Ray, you know, I, this rodeo we've gone through before with DPH. They're not gonna accept a lame excuse from me.
Oh, well, no.
They're gonna, that's why I will be, I'll be rolled over the coals as soon as I go, oh, let the guy have the well. And, and, and then the next thing they're gonna do is they're gonna say, well, I think we need to replace the chairman of the WCA. I, I, I can't, I can't be dishonest about it. I have to be very honest. I have no reason to accept this well. I, 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 there, there's nothing, I don't have anything in my hand that can say, oh, economic hardship. Well, not really. It's gonna be less than six thousand dollars to put a water line in, even at four hundred feet. We all know that. So.
Yeah, but it's, they, if they wanted to show that it wasn't a hardship, it's up to them, the property owner, to come in and tell you, it's gonna cost me a hundred thousand dollars, whatever the number is, to put this water line in.
Right.
But nobody, he did explain some stuff, and, and both of them, I don't know, they're, they're just playing the one that, well, the other guy didn't do it. Well, I don't know what happened to the other guys or what happened, but,
Well, you're it now. You heard it from Ledge Light?
Yeah.
They, they said, they have, they, they, they have no idea how they got approval for that well. It wasn't approved, it wasn't approved officially, which is kind of scary. I, I, I read this letter, and I almost said, uh-oh.
Yeah, I found, I found the application where it was signed off on that they could put the well in. I sent it to you and Juliet at one time, uh, it was last week.
Yes. Well, I, I'd like to get this resolved, but I guess, you know, officially, uh, I, I'm looking for some guidance from the commissioners. I mean, do you, does anybody have any other, um, thinking on this or thought? Because I don't want to hold up the landowner, of course. But I don't know how to proceed here. It's not looking good. Um, as far as I can see, we, you know, the, the, the landowner's gonna have to come up, I think you're right, Ray, with an actual cost to put this water line in from the property line to their house. Um, now, you know, again, I'm reserving, I would like to reserve the possibility of coming in from the north side when we start doing the construction on the tank, but I understand that the bank's not gonna hold on a loan waiting for that to happen too. So, how do we, how do we get out of this, guys?
Hey Ed, can I, can I chime in?
Yeah.
Dave Blodgett, I'm one of the property owners.
Yes.
So you guys are getting confused with the properties. Uh, I don't know what one seventy is, but that has nothing to do with the water tank. I had submitted my well exception back in November of last year. So, you know, irregardless of one seventy, I don't know what's going on with that property, but my well exception had two, what I believe major points. The first is, you talked about the property line two hundred feet, or two hundred feet from the water line, which is true, but it's a flag lot, and you can't use that piece of property to put the water in because it's wetlands. You have to go down a shared driveway. That's, that water line is more than four hundred feet from my property line if you use that driveway to get to my property. So that's been my argument. It's, it's not, you know, that I'm within two hundred feet. The property line from where the water line, the actual path it takes is over four hundred feet, and that's my argument.
What's that gonna cost you?
Well, okay, so, so I, I talked to two excavators. The first two looked at them and said, I can't do this. For one reason, the water line's on the other side of the street, so you have to dig up the road to put the water line in. And neither one of them were bonded. They said, we can't do it. So I just talked to John Moore, JP Moore, who's a local guy, and he said, you know, this is gonna be an expensive job. He said, who's gonna dig up the road? Is the town ledger gonna pay for that? I said, I don't think so. I don't think they're paying for anything. So, as far as the cost goes, John is gonna get me an estimate, but I'll guarantee you, it's gonna be more than a well would cost.
Wait, wait, we gotta answer their first question. Where's the meter gonna be? Where's the meter pit gonna be?
It's not gonna be on my property.
The, the meter pit goes to the property line.
Right, so you don't, you don't get charged for that. That's something we have to pay for, not you. So don't, you can't give that as an excuse for not tying into water.
So you're, you're telling me you're gonna pay to dig up the driveway all the way to my property line? Is that, is that what you're saying? Because if you are, then, then go for it. I'm, I'm ready to move on.
Well, I mean, we have to put the meter pit to the property line. That's, that's our, wherever, wherever that is, we have, that's where the meter pit, we don't put meter pits on, you know, somebody else's property. It has to be on your property line.
Okay, is there, is there, I, I know Ray's still on. Is there somebody that can meet me out there and kind of discuss? I did talk with Mo a little bit, Ray, and he had mentioned that the meter pit would just be on the opposite side of the road, which would have, which isn't my property. It's, you know, the shared driveway. So was he, was he miss, uh?
No, he, we put it close to your property line, wherever it goes. So you'll need a, you need the two-inch line that goes across the street, and then the meter pit goes wherever the property line was surveyed that is closer, you know, gets close to it. That's on your, next to your property or on it, or something in that driveway area. Or you, you don't even really have to go up that driveway. We can go off to the side if you wanted to. Uh, and then run it along. But, uh, you, Ed, you're saying that Ledge will pay from the main to the property line?
You know, I have to, uh, it, it, the, I'd have to check that, but that's generally what we do. Number one. Number two, he gets an assessment. The property, I gotta check to see if the property's been assessed. You know, but there is an assessment, and there is a tie-in fee. He's got to pay in a tie-in fee, correct?
Right, right.
So, so I.
So Ed, I'm looking at the GIS map. There's a twenty-foot right-of-way for a driveway on that property. So I'm trying to understand how the, where the property line is, but I don't see why a meter pit has to go all the way back to the property itself, and why it can't be on the side of the driveway.
I, I would say, uh, you, you're right. Uh, when I was talking to Mike, he said that it, it would be on the side of the driveway. That you wouldn't tear up the driveway. You would just go on the side with, with the water line. But we didn't talk about the meter pit, so I'm not, not exactly sure for that.
The meter pit does go at the property line, uh, so it's, it's at the road property line, closest in that area. So we don't go all the way back. Uh, matter of fact, what we're doing here is, because there's pressure down there, you bring down, you get the two-inch service to, and we reduce it to a one-inch meter inside the pit, so he doesn't have to buy a giant meter pit for it. Then you go right back in to two-inch, and it can be a plastic line.
Right.
Uh, you know, class two hundred, uh, and then run it all the way to your, to the house. So that's, that's what the details are on that.
Yeah, so I, you know, so, so the tech, so the, the techn- technique to do this is there, the cost is mitigated somewhat for him. You know, I, you know, so I, so, so the problem is, is submitting this as a hardship is going to be difficult, because I think that's gonna, you know, it's, it's certainly gonna compete with putting a well in, for sure, in terms of the dollars.
Well, to, to be honest, the, on the application, it says you cannot, um, the well exception application, you cannot use hardship as an excuse. So, I, I never, no, I never put money in there as an excuse. My, my justification was my property line is more than four hundred feet from where it ties into the well. Because again, you're using that shared driveway that, quite frankly, water line should have been put in before they ever installed that driveway, since it's the only way into the property. But, um, that, that was my excuse. I never, I never wanted to use money as an excuse. That just kind of came up as we had the conversation last fall. Um, because you guys had mentioned that it wouldn't be as expensive as a well.
I, I think your, your driveway has to come, your property line has to come to the road, or it's not a flag lot. And you can't use a shared driveway, I think, for that to happen.
My property line does go to the road, but you, the water line, if you look at the subdivision plan, the water line goes down the shared driveway. It does not.
Yeah, that, that was just drawn, obviously, they drew it in, and that wasn't approved by anybody. Uh, because, matter of fact, you can't have, each lot needed a separate service, or you guys become, uh, property owners of one main, which I know nobody wants to do. So, when that was done, it, it was just shown on a plan that there was a, a water main. Everybody was getting connected to water. I assumed that, because I, like I said, that's been done a while back. So.
Okay, well, you know, I've been at this for about a year now, so if you guys could give me some guidance and what, what the next step is, I, you know, I, I've tried the well exception. I guess that's not gonna be approved by you guys. So, how, how do we determine if Ray just said that you, you have to use my property, but you can't because it's wetlands? I, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused as to what my next step is.
You can put a water line through wetlands.
Right. Yeah, that, I've, uh, when I was on planning and zoning, the, the, the wetlands has given, um, exemptions to put a water line in because it's a minimum disturbance. So if that's the minimum, if that's the minimum distance to get to your, to your, you know, the proposed house, that's fine too. You'd have to go to Wetlands and make the proposal. Um, obviously, there's, there's, I guess, uh, several alternatives, and, you know, we shouldn't be here. I, I don't think we should be engineering this. I mean, I think, you know, you would have to talk to your contractor, determine what would be, you know, a cost-effective way of getting a water line in there. I, I mean, I, I, you know, I don't know, um, you know, it, it seems to me that, that, that would be an option, and I'm sure, um, you know, it, it's, it would be even a better option for you not to have to maintain a well in the future. I mean, and eventually, you may think it's not cost-effective, but it, but I'll tell you, if I had my, uh, if I had my druthers, I'd rather be tied to city water than have to deal with a well any, any day.
Which lot number is this?
It's one fifty, I think. Is that correct?
One fifty.
Yeah.
One fifty.
Yeah.
One fifty Gallup Hill.
Isn't this the one we talked about servicing it through the property that has the, the water tank on it now?
We did.
We did, yeah.
Yeah, and we were gonna use the old pipe as a sleeve to run the new line through, to save the excavation.
Well, that, that was a proposal, and when I talked to, I guess it was, was it Jan at the time, and now she's gone, and it's Juliet?
Liz, you mean Liz?
Liz, Liz, right. It was Liz, and now it's Juliet. Um, she, um, she didn't think that that was, uh, a possible plan. She, she didn't even know how I would begin to even start a process to try and get that approved. No, I'm serious. I, I'm just, I'm, I'm frustrated because, you know, you know, I, I know everyone's just doing their job, but no one seems to know how to help me here just to get water to, to my property.
Yeah, so let's just quickly entertain that. So if we did use that as a sleeve, how many feet, we, we're not talking very far, are we?
Not at all.
And we don't have to dig up the road.
Right.
I mean, again, I'm with that. It's just when I talked to Juliet, she just, she didn't even know, because I thought she would be the person that could help me with that. She says, I, I, I wouldn't even know where to start.
Well, okay, so here's the deal there. That's town property, and if there's a water line in there. Now, Bill, I don't know how that would, um, you know, I don't know if the town, what the town's gonna do with that property, once, once we get it all cleared up.
It would make it more difficult for the town to sell.
Exactly. Yeah, I, I think that's probably what Liz was saying, that, you know, if you did that, now you've got a water line to a home coming through a quote-unquote right-of-way on another person's property. So your water line is basically running through someone else's land.
Yeah, you know what? I think you're right. That was the argument she used.
Yeah, it wouldn't be in the acre that the tank's sitting on. I think that's just slim piece of land. I don't think you can build anything on it, can you?
I'm, I'm looking at the map, and, and assuming the pipe comes straight back from the road to the tank.
Right.
It's, um, I'm not even, yeah, it's about four hundred and fifty feet to the tank. And then only, you know, maybe, maybe a hundred feet, depending where the house is, on one fifty. But you're still, you know, the homeowner, the, the property owner at one fifty is now dependent on an adjacent property owner's right-of-way for the water.
Well, right now, it's owned by the town.
Yeah. And, and I'm assuming the town's gonna, gonna sell it.
Yeah.
Well, we, you know, we actually have this on Stevens Road. I don't know whether you guys know it or not, but that's exactly what we had to do off of one seventeen.
Right.
It had to be a strip of land that we had to give Stevens Street the water, and it, it's an eight-inch main, not, not a ten.
That, that was for a whole subdivision, though.
Uh, right, yeah, it was, yeah. So, that's, the, the other thinking, Bill, is that we don't tear up the road. We just use the sleeve to be able to go underneath the road, and then we take the line where it wouldn't interfere.
Yeah, yeah, I get that. Um, the other thing you could do, uh, it's a two-point-nine acre property, one fifty-eight, where the tank is. Um, if you subdivided that lot, assuming you can, took a strip off it, and then conveyed that to one fifty, and of course, he, you know, not for free, but he, anyway, I look at this, it's gonna cost money.
Yeah, and that, and that actually can be a shared cost. So let's say the town does sell the land, and somebody else wants to tie into that water line.
Yep.
They'd have to pay a, a certain percent back to, back to Dave.
Ray was, Ray was saying people don't want to share water mains.
You, you can't, you can't start sharing water mains, and first of all, it's a two-inch service, and then,
Okay.
if, if you don't, if you policy, and you guys follow our policy, is unless you put a meter pit at the property line, and the two homeowners battle it out for the, who owns the, who, you know, uses so much water because, uh, it's so far off the road, that, that becomes an issue.
So we're back. I guess we're gonna give up on that, right, Stan?
Yeah, I mean, unless, unless the WPCA retained a right-of-way or something through the property.
Yeah, that's a discussion I think we're gonna have to have, uh, but Dave's not gonna wait for that. I, I, I think we better go back to a plan that's solid and not get into these what-ifs, right? Right, Bill?
I agree.
If, if, if it were my property and I had all the money in the world, I'd buy one fifty-eight from the town.
Well, to be honest with you, to be honest with you, Liz actually mentioned that to me, and I said I was very interested because she said it's probably not a billable lot. It's all wetlands. And, you know, if it's not a billable lot, who really wants it? Well, I'll take it to put a water line in, but, you know, that's a conversation down the road. You guys still have to remove a tank and determine whether it's buildable, and, you know, I want to get my house built, so.
Yeah.
I didn't really want to wait that long, but that's certainly a possibility.
Yeah, I mean, what, yeah, they, 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 actually, the demon, when is the demolition gonna happen, Ray? I think it's pretty soon. I mean, they've got, the contract's been awarded, and.
No, nobody's been in contact with us from Ledge, if it was awarded or anything. So I don't know what's going on.
It, it was awarded. I, I saw the, a note, the letter sent to, um, to Stanford Wrecking a couple of weeks ago. So I.
We haven't had a pre-construction or.
Right.
Whatever's going on.
Well, I guess it's a heads up for you.
Thanks.
They're, they're coming.
Okay.
So, you know, I, uh, yeah, so I, I would, uh, I mean, if it's not a billable lot. If it's not a billable lot, I, I think, Bill, we would never have any issue with another landowner there. And if it's got wetland and not buildable, I mean, it just should be.
Yeah, but Mr. Blodgett's gotta move ahead and.
Right.
You know, that, that's a lot of ifs.
Right.
If, if he were really lucky, it's all wetlands. Nobody will ever build on it. And he's got a nice piece of property protecting him from the road.
Right.
I would put my water line down the driveway.
Yeah. I mean, I, I agree. I mean, uh, you, you got control of that. The other, the other side, you don't.
I know it's not good news, but that, that's what I would do.
Okay. So ju- just to, to recap then, so ledgered would pay to dig up the road. I would not, that, I would not incur that cost. It would be once the pit is installed from there to the house. Is that correct?
Right. That's correct.
Okay.
And, and to be clear, the, the pit would be close to the road based on what I'm looking at. A twenty foot right away, twenty foot wide right away.
So it would be right away. Okay.
Yeah. And then you'd have. Depending where your house is, four hundred and fifty, five hundred, seven hundred feet of, of, uh, line to put in the ground.
And, and this is a good time for us to, before it gets winter, this is a good time for us to commit to that. So I mean, you know, you, I, I agree with you. We need to work fast. Cause we can put a mid, we can put a, a, a meter pit there at any time between now and whenever. You will have the meter pit there and you'll, you can tie into it.
That would be great.
So.
Cause, cause that I think was gonna be a large part of the cost was digging up the road and. You know, tying into the water line on the other side. So. I'll, I'll definitely talk to the, the contractors that I was working with and say, hey, the town's gonna do that part. You just have to connect from the meter pit to the house.
Correct. Yeah, right. Ray's pretty experienced in digging up road, right?
I was just gonna ask, is that where G U comes in to dig up the road part?
You, you, you know how to do that.
Yeah.
You know, so. Yeah. The fortunate thing is, here's the good, the news. Steve didn't just pave that road. So, um. I won't be on his crap list. So, so I hope that helps you. I mean, I like, I like the idea that we're helping and not, you know, constantly putting a. You know, roadblock into somebody wanting to do something. So, um. You know, let's, 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 uh, you know, that, we're, we're gonna commit to that. So, so you, uh. You, you, you know, you can be rest assured, you'll have a, you'll have a meter pit on that side and then we avoid all this other stuff.
Okay. Well, I appreciate, I appreciate your time and I'll, I'll touch base with. Groton Utilities, I guess, to get that process started, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Give, give me a call Thursday probably and either me or Mo can reach out there and we'll take a look at it together. Or sometime this week, late this week and early next week, we can go over.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. All right, guys. I don't have any other business. Uh, do you hear a motion for adjournment? Unless you have anything? Does anybody have anything before I do that? Anything?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. All right, guys. Thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna proceed with sewer lines and water lines. So have a good, have a good.
Hi, everybody.
Can I leave? Does my leave? Oh, I gotta stop sharing. That's why. There we go. All right, guys. We'll see you.